I'm gonna go ahead and call meeting to order. Start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I can go ahead and ask for approval of this morning's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
No, second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Angela, do you have everybody you need for your role?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated 2021.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 26, 2021.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consideration is our claims for payment dated June 2nd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 2nd, 2021 claims for payment.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Utility permits, I didn't have any utility permits. Taylor, any update on secondary roads?
Yeah, sure. Have that top. So, I let you all know yesterday, our contract sprayers cannot come this spring. So, I told Paul right away yesterday, so he can get started. So, now we need to talk about what to do in the future. So, my proposal to all of you was that I put out an ad in the paper and we try to find somebody, whether it's full-time, part-time, just so we can start spraying, get moving on this, because one guy's not gonna be able to get much coverage. So, that's my thought. And then if we get something good, then we use that in the fall and we keep moving forward that way. So, there's enough in the budget. If we're not paying them the 95 grand to spray for us, then, yeah. So, there's plenty of money there for an employee. Because we had already planned on hiring one for about three or four months in the next fiscal year. So, the money's there.
This was a two-year plan to get us caught up doing blanket spraying. They're not showing up, we need to get the weed sprayed. I would prefer they can't show up now. I don't care if they show up in the fall, I don't need them.
Did they state why? I mean, I assume labor shortage.
Yep. So, he usually uses college kids, he said.
Yep.
So, we had to wait. And it's like, is that really an excuse? Like, do you tell that to all your people that you got a contract with? Because then you're not starting till after college for everybody. I suppose we're far down his line. Yeah, that was his reasoning.
Yeah, we definitely need to move forward. I would say.
Advertise and get after it.
Yep.
Good to me. I'll probably just make it an open position to fill.
All right. Okay, next item I have is public comment. Michael, you wanna go ahead and open up the public comment line, please?
I'll make the calls.
All right. We're ready for public comment this morning.
Julie Dunn, can you hear me? Hello?
Ma'am.
Yes, I can hear you, Julie.
Okay, about opening up the county courthouse. I see you have plenty, you have people down there at the, at your meeting. I think it's time that people be allowed back in. I understand BJ was gonna talk to department heads, but they're also public servants and everything is opening up all over the place. I was at a meeting last night. The room was full and no one was wearing a mask. People are ready to have the courthouse open and I'm not sure what the delay is. Thank you.
Additional public comment.
This is Donna.
Donna.
Hi, so what is the delay for opening the courthouse to the public?
The delay is just making sure that we have everything. We're gonna meet today at 11:30 to discuss with possible action on the reopening of the courthouse. So, it's just a matter of getting everybody's input and making sure that we're all set for whatever decision is made at 11:30 today.
Haven't you already had one or two of those meetings?
Well, with the advice of the county attorney, we need to open the courthouse, reopen the courthouse the same way as we closed it. So, it needs to be done officially and make sure that everybody's needs are met and the logistics and operations are taken care of accordingly.
So, any clue at all when it will happen?
I'm hoping, and I'm one vote, I'm hoping it happens immediately following the 11:30 meeting would be my.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Other public comment. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna move on to the resolution, rescinding the resolution 2122.
Do we want any explanation on this?
Sure. Do you wanna give just a brief explanation?
What we had done was, we had kind of tried to do two things in one document and found out that we needed to absolutely separate those documents. So, that's what we're doing, is those documents, the same documents as that was voted on last week. Exact same, same number, same everything, but two specific separate documents.
And that's all three of these items, right?
One is to rescind and then the other two are to adopt.
So, I'll go ahead and make the resolution, rescinding resolution 2021, 22.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, Angela?
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye. Motion carries. The next is the appropriations resolution 2021 fiscal year.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations, appropriations resolution for 2021 fiscal year.
I will second. I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, Angela?
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye. The final is the appropriations resolution amendment.
I'll move to approve the appropriations resolution amendment.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Again, thank you to the auditors' office and county attorney Meyer for just getting everything separated and making sure that we're in full accordance with Iowa code. So, hearing no other discussion, Angela?
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is, it is past 902, it is actually 908 and I'll open the public hearing for the FY 2021 budget amendment.
Do you wanna explain what the amendment is?
Lance, I'll let you know you've got it all highlighted there.
Yeah, I haven't highlighted, but basically this is just the amendment. We have some money that we could possibly be coming in and this just allows us to spend this money. It's what we're, what is it, 1.8, 1.6?
1.6.
1.6 million that.
The American Recovery Act.
Right.
And so.
This is just allowing us, if the money is here, that we can do something with it. This.
It can be received and acknowledged.
Yep. Otherwise, it'll work into next year. And I believe we'll have to do the same amendment next year.
Correct.
Next fiscal year.
Unless there's additional interim final rules.
Yes.
Hearing none, I can ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I can ask for adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment.
Make a motion to approve the adoption of the 2021 budget amendment.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, if we, if we don't use it, it's still there.
Right.
Right.
Over.
Like I said, this is just to allow us the capability.
To accept it.
Yep.
Hearing no other discussion, Angela?
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Final document would be the appropriations resolution amendment.
Make a motion to approve the appropriations resolution amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion of second, any discussion? And the dollar amount is 1.636 million dollars approximately. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, Angela?
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration of accepting the resignation from the MHDS advisory board. Bev Dirksen from Iowa Falls is relocating and has given her formal resignation from the MHDS board.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the resignation of Bev Dirksen from the MHDS advisory board.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion?
That will leave an opening that people could apply for as well.
And just to note, Bev has been a part of that board for many, many years and appreciate her work. She served in the healthcare field prior to that and has just been a great advocate for the mental health community. So, all those in favor, say aye. Carries. Next we have is the statements of understanding with the CICS personnel. This is the Community, Central Iowa Community Services, our regional mental health board. And so, what we have here are three statements of understanding of the percentage of work that'll be billed to CICS and not the county. So, we have Michelle Lochner, Jody Hamilton, and Lynn Adams. And so, this is just a formality to make sure that these are on the books so that the region can make sure that they're paid accordingly.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 statements of understanding with CICS from personnel.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any further discussion?
These are done annually.
Yes, sir. And they're evaluated based on, you know, if somebody's job description changes, somebody has extra duties added, has them taken away, then they can, yeah, percentages can change. So, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is a single change of status, actually the auditor's monthly report.
I'm making a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is a change of status from the sheriff's office.
Make a motion to approve the change of status from the sheriff's office effective May 26, 2021 for Ann Knight. It is a resignation as part-time correctional officer. She's accepted a full-time position within another office.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, another business, I was approached by Mark Anderson of Brownhurst Insurance to talk about the services and the product provided by them for insurance for county work comp and liability. So, Mark, yield the floor to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to come in and visit with you all. As BJ said, I manage marketing and I think most of us know each other fairly well. But I'm an agent with Brownhurst Insurance across the street. Our office is located inside the Hardwood County Savings Bank. And Brownhurst Insurance is an independent insurance agency, meaning we're several different companies. One of the companies that we write insurance for is ICAP, as you may have been familiar with. ICAP is a company that we use to insure several other entities around the area, one of which could be cities or counties. And I understand Harden County has been insured in another pool for quite some time. But I've learned that sometimes it's worth maybe checking into other alternatives and seeing what other options are out there. I understand that there's some complexities to that decision if the county were to come to that. But with me today is Willian White. She's from County Risk Management Services and works with ICAP in helping with property liability and work comp. And I can promise you, the other thing I've learned is to have a good team, a good team around me. And I can't be an expert in everything, and that's why Willian's here. She's much more in-depth with.
We stay away from that word, "expert." Increases the bar of expectations.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to Willian so that she can kind of explain what she does and the role that ICAP could have if the county was interested in looking into the services that ICAP could offer. So, Willian, come on.
Good morning.
Hi, how are you?
I'm very good, thank you.
I wanna start by just giving you a little overview history of the insurance regulations and environment in the state of Iowa. In the early 80s, there was a tremendous upheaval in offerings to municipalities. Believe it or not, you guys have a very unique set of exposures and assets. You do everything from, you know, conservation to law enforcement to secondary roads, and it's very all-encompassing. At that time, we had a lot of different options for you, insurance carriers that were providing coverage. In fact, Greenell Mutual used to write cities, believe it or not. But during the early 80s, there was a real crisis, what we call a hard market, and companies started pulling out of different types of businesses and entities that they had previously insured with no problem at all. What that did is it left a lot of cities and counties with no options for insurance coverages and there was no ability to be able to guesstimate for the upcoming year what your actual costs were gonna be, because they kept changing. So, during that time in the early 80s, IMWCA actually formed in 81. There were a couple, and they are overseen by, or regulated, if you would, by the Iowa League of Cities. And there were a couple of mayors that got together and they went to the Iowa League of Cities and said, "Hey, you know, we can't find coverage. We've got to have, you know, workers' compensation." So, that started the bullying aspect first. And in that time, they started out with zero and they've grown today to, you know, they've got over 533 members. IMWCA writes specifically 80 counties. And I do have a packet of information I'm gonna, I'll leave with each one of you so you can look at those numbers and, you know, the specific dates. But at the same time, that hit their short-term goal of providing the work comp coverage, because everybody pulled out. Now, in the state of Iowa, we ascribe to the National Council on Compensation Insurance, and we have for many, many years. What that is, is that's what we call a residual market. So, those cities were having to go to the residual market to find workers' compensation. It's a last-stop resort. The problem is, is that those rates begin at 20% higher than what the standard market is. And then depending on what your loss ratio is, your history for claims, it could be more than 50%, greater than what they had been paying. So, it was really a crisis time. So, IMWCA formed, and like I said, today they insure 80 counties, which is, you know, basically what we're here to. That helped them in the short run, but then they had an issue with their property values and their liability, et cetera. There had been a pool, I won't go into that. It was a star pool specifically for law enforcement that went south, if we can, and there were several entities that were left hanging with claims. And they had contacted the Iowa, they were contacting the Iowa Legislature saying, you know, "You've gotta help us out." So, what happened at that time, in the Iowa Code 670, they allowed Iowa Communities Assurance Pool to form. And they actually started writing their first member in 1986. And also at the same time is when the Heartland Pool came into being. So, that was a unique situation there. IMWCA is actually a 2080 agreement, you know, similar to every other 2080 agreement that, you know, your county is a part of. And ICAP is actually a risk-sharing pool. And what that means is, if you join ICAP, you're a member. You're not an insured, you're a member. So, you have a voice in how the pool operates. And I don't know a whole lot about how the Heartland Pool operates, per se. Lance, are you on that? You're the representative. Okay, so you, you know a lot more about how that one operates than, than what I do. But I would assume it probably, you have a voice and, you know, when there are, ICAP is always increasing and improving their coverages. And I can tell you honestly where those come from is, you know, I have clients that come to me and say, you know, "Hey, do we have this coverage?" You know, I'll look through the documents and say, "Well, yes, but it's a sublimit." Well, you know, "I really think we need to have a higher one. This is a concern to us." So, then either the member contacts our board of directors or they contact their agents and have them contact. And January 1, we had a huge property, what do you call it, endorsement or amendment that was added into the coverages, you know? Things that you don't normally think about and people don't normally schedule, like guardrails. Well, you know, we'd had a couple of claims where a car, you know, had, and they didn't know who it was, and it was several thousands of dollars to get this guardrail replaced. So, we added in $10,000 automatic coverage for every member. And there's enhancements that go on every day, you know? And I can tell you, I'm still waiting on one that I requested about a year and a half ago. But, you know, it has to go through, you know, we start here at this level and then it goes to the board and then it goes to Sedgwick, who is overseeing our operations as well. So, there are several levels. And of course, everything has to go through legal, you know? You gotta always check off with your attorneys. But let me do back up. I am an agent and I have my own agency in Iowa. Plus, I am one of four members of what we call County Risk Management Services. And our whole purpose is to be an agent to the agent. You know, there's only one county that you're, typically your agent resides in that needs an insurance agent. So, we, we act more like a field marketing representative and we assist the local agents. That being said, I personally, as an agent, write 58 different governmental entities. Couple of counties, couple of cities, 2080 agreements, couple of fairs. The fairs were just added, in the Iowa Code, they added them in or wrote it in that they could now be a member of IMWCA and ICAP. That being said, that's all that we write. They do not write anything else, similar to the Heartland Pool. You know, you only write governmental entities. And for counties, I have about the third part of the state. So, I have 33 counties that I work with agents for. So, that's just a little bit of background. But nationwide, there's 84% of governmental entities that belong to some type of a pool in Iowa. That number's even higher, it's like 94%. If I showed you the map, this is a map of Iowa with all of our counties. Every county that's in blue there is a member of ICAP and IMWCA or, it can be either or. ICAP and IMWCA are what we call sister pools. So, all the blue are ICAP, IMWCA members. All the green are Heartland members. The white are what we call traditional insurance state or counties. So, this is O'Brien, actually they're in the process of visiting with ICAP too. Allen McKee, Floyd, and then, which one is that? Someone. And this is Lucas County. But the purple that you see, those are extremely large counties that are basically self-insured. You know, one of those counties, I know that we have talked to them about providing some loss control services. And, you know, when we were talking, "Well, you know, if we've got a $10 million claim, we just write a check." It's like, "Well, that's nice." You know, there's very few of us that can do that in the state of Iowa. But this is the makeup. So, if you add, ICAP has 75 counties, IMWCA has 80 counties. If you add your 10 in, there's 99 counties. You can see where we get into the numbers. So, very broad coverage and they have quite an extensive reach into the state of Iowa. Couple of other things I wanna mention, let me see, I had told you about the. On an operating basis, you know, it's, we operate just very similar to, you know, a traditional insurance company. You know how, you have a claim, you call it in. You know, you have an adjuster that's assigned to you. You really don't see much difference except for the fact that you have a voice at the table. You are an owner. The way that ICAP provides part of that ownership is, if we have an operating profit at the end of the year, you know, a traditional insurance company would pay you a dividend. ICAP returns that operating income profit to the members in the form of what we call a voucher credit. And it depends on how long you've been a member of ICAP. There's a formula that they use based on pro-rata of what your contribution or what your premium that you pay in versus what they collect in total. I can tell you from the counties that I've tracked for about the past 20 years, it figures out to about every 11, potential 11 years, your return equals about one year of what your, your payment is. I've got, I've got two counties that they're on a 10-year cycle. That being said, ICAP has pay or had investment income to return to its members since they were 100% vested. It's a six-year process. And I can go back just a little. There are basically three ways that you can insure your exposures. You can either buy coverage from a traditional insurance company. You can become a member of a pool, which is what quite a few of the counties are. Or you can self-insure, like on the map. Or you can do a combination thereof. And that would be, the combination would be, you decide that you wanna keep like a quarter of a million dollar deductible and you buy insurance over top of that. But basically, those are the three ways. There is a fourth way, and that's called going bear. You don't buy any insurance at all and you don't set aside any money in a fund. I would not recommend that. You know, first time that you get caught in that scenario. I have seen that happen in certain lines of coverage, but I would never suggest that. On IMWCA, again, we're back on the workers' compensation. Both these pools focus very, very strongly on loss control and risk management. You know, it's kinda like doing a comparison, you know, you were talking about your budgets earlier. You can either increase your revenues or decrease your expenses if you need more profit at the bottom line. On insurance items, especially workers' compensation, you can have different attitudes in, in your employee work. You can either say, "Well, that's what we buy insurance for, and believe it or not. I, I've been working with a county that that's been their philosophy for quite a few years. Well, that's what we buy insurance for, to cover all the claims." Well, the bottom line is, you still have employees getting hurt. And sometimes you have employees getting hurt very seriously. Then when an employee is off work, you have a hole, the job that they were doing, which affects all the other employees in the same department. Even if you bring in somebody part-time to. You still are not as productive as you could be if that employee were healthy and safe. One of the loss control reps who used to work with IMWCA, he's retired now. But he would always give an example, you know, especially when, you know, we were working with a county or a city and they were kind of not wanting to explore all the different ways that they could have a safety, safe work culture. And he said, "I can tell you, one of the worst things that I could ever imagine as a department head or as a supervisor is you having to go to one of your employees' homes, knock on the door and tell their spouse that their, their, you know, husband or wife is not going to come home that night because there was a terrible accident." He said, "I was with a mayor that did that once and one of the first things that the wife said is, besides, 'What happened?'" "Well, why did that happen? You know, aren't you supposed to keep my husband safe?" Why wasn't? Yeah, and that was that was tough because right behind her, there's three little kids. You know, so IMWCA and ICAP are both very strong in loss control and risk management. And I can tell you, a lot of the, a lot of the procedures or policies that they come and ask you to put into place are there. I don't want to say knee jerk reaction because there has been incidents. And this is the best solution to make sure that doesn't happen again. So we we rely not only on state of Iowa and the claims that have occurred here, but nationwide through, you know, the other pools that run coverage. So on, I can tell you, the average county experience with IMWCA is 83%. That's the average. We do have a couple of counties that are in the high 60s and low 70s. But then we have a couple that, you know, I saw one just yesterday. They have 1.3. So they had a couple of catastrophic things that were beyond their control, but you know, we're working with that. The average county discount is 57%. So the way that IMWCA structures their rates is we start with what the standard rate is and that's approved by the Iowa commissioner. And those rates are promulgated once a year and they receive them typically in August, September. And then the insurance commissioner can either approve them or she can appeal certain or he can appeal certain class codes. Everybody has the same class code in the state. It doesn't matter if we're in Harton County or if you're in Decatur County. We all use the same class codes and believe there's about 10,000 of them. But most counties, I see they have eight to 10 different class codes depending on how they track their payroll, et cetera. So we start with that standard rate. And then there are discounts that IMWCA provides beyond your experience modification number. So if you are a new member, you start out with zero for longevity and then you can build up to an additional 12%. Then they have what they call a loss history discount. That's in addition to your experience mod and that could be up to 18%. And then there's another, what they call good experience discount that they can add that into. So the total that you can achieve besides your experience mod is total, well, the average now is 57%. So if your experience mod right now is 0.90, you're getting a 10% discount. And if you've been with IMWCA for several years, you could be getting 57% in addition to that. So if this, if your standard premium is 100,000 and you're getting the 57% and your 10% experience mod, out of that $100,000 in work comp premium, you're going to have 67% discount. So you're going to be paying 43,000. So it's it's really big. And that 57%, those are counties that have bought into with supervisors and with the department heads and see the importance of that safety program. And there's several different things and and we have loss control, risk management specialists, both ICAP and IMWCA that schedule, you know, quarterly visits and they will come down, you know, for safety meetings and do training. One of the things, you know, were real, real important, the value of the risk management and and safety. Both of these have online resource libraries that have training modules that you can use for your safety committee meetings. There's ICAP has about 10,000 training, different modules. They have PowerPoint presentations. They have policies and procedures, you know, seatbelt, you know, policies that you can you can adapt. I can tell you, depending on what issues come up. I've got two counties now that they were in the hiring mode. You know, it's hard to find employees now. And one of them has, one of them had an employee that had is a firefighter and had, you know, had an OWI. And they said, okay, but part of his job is driving a fire truck. He still has an SR filing. Can't, can he legally drive? I said, well, here's the thing. So we've been going back and forth. As long as he has the proper filing and on an SR filing, there's two. There's an owner operator and then there's broad form. He has to have a broad form because in our coverage documents, it says that as long as a driver is legal according to the state of Iowa DOT, it's an acceptable driver. I can tell you on on one member, that's not the answer they wanted because they were wanting to, I think, divest themselves of that employee because of some other work issues. But on the other member, they were looking to hire a secondary roads, a guy that's got a CDL, but he had his license suspended because he had like six speeds in in 18 months. So his license was suspended. He's back. He has an SR filing, but driving is not going to be a major part of his job. So he said, well, you know, his filing ends in July. And I said, well, as long as he doesn't get another violation. I said, you know, you need to check your personnel handbook and make sure that you have an appropriate probationary period that'll get you past that. But if you want to hire him, if if he checks off all your boxes, we're not going to tell you no as long as he meets the state of Iowa laws. So that's one of the, one of the things. We also had in both of those cases, I urged them to call ICAP Legal Access. We have, one of the benefits to members is they have the ability to contact an attorney firm that's in Des Moines that's contracted with ICAP that provides five free hours of legal service. And they have, I think I included that in one of the handouts I'm going to give you. You know, they are well versed and this is all they do is municipal entities in zoning and HR and employment practices and, you know, law enforcement. They do a lot of defense work for our entities that have law enforcement claims, which was has skyrocketed in the state the last couple of years. So.
I'm going to interrupt. We'll have to wrap things up here.
Okay. Okay, well, I've got a handout for each one of you. But there's two things I want to mention. ICAP has, like any 2080 agreement, has withdrawal provisions. So if you are interested in proceeding, the first thing that I would urge you to do is to check your withdrawal provisions that you have in the Heartland Pool. I know with ICAP, if you're going out for bid, you need to provide 60 days of notification. And that is to secure your whatever you have built up in your cumulative reserve fund. So if you don't give 60 days notice when you're with ICAP, whatever is in your cumulative reserve fund, you forfeit. If you do give your 60 days notice, then you take that with you. The other thing is I noticed all of your, you've got your retroactive dates. So we want to be sure that we carry forward all of the retroactive dates. But the withdrawal provisions is very, very important. I can say, and you've been a member for quite a while with the Heartland Pool, but we operate the same way. It's not meant to be a vehicle for members to jump in and jump out of. Long term stability is very important to the continuation of the pool. You know, it's the same with Heartland. So do you have any questions in particular that I can help you with?
When you say decisions are being made, who makes the decisions? Who is the board?
On what?
On your turn, Ford.
Oh, on the, you mean, who makes up the members, the membership?
Not the memberships. Who makes the decisions when it, when you change a policy or something? You have a board that does that, correct?
The board approves it, yeah.
Who's the board?
Okay, ICAP Board is made up of three city representatives. There are two at large and then three county. On IMWCA, there's four county board members and then there are five city representatives. And, you know, if you want, everything is transparent. You can go to the website. ICAP is www.icap Iowa dot com. And you can pull up, there's tabs all the way across. I think the tab that has the board directors is who we are at the top. And then you click on that and then there's drop down box. Click on the board of directors and underneath that you'll be able to find all the financial statements. There's a tab for financials. Every check that the pool writes is listed in there as the warrants. So they list them all by year. And I'm not sure how, you know, how far behind they are or what. But and IMWCA is www dot IMWCA dot org. And you can pull up, every board member has their bio and, you know, how long they've served and and that. Any other questions or any other information I can provide? I will also leave, this is the member services guide. I don't have one of those, but there's also, you know, the Iowa County Magazine. There was a great article in there on the Heartland Pool. And there's also an article on IMWCA and ICAP as well. And then this is just one of the sample policies that we have that's available for members to use. I mean, those are all Word documents, so you can customize it to yourself. But slip, trips and falls in the state of Iowa in our pool make up about 68% of the dollars that are paid. And that includes not just on ice or falling down a step when you miss it, but also, you know, a lot of those claims are from operators entering or exiting equipment. You know, they missed the last step or.
Give an extra copy of this.
Yep, yep, yep. There's two there.
All right.
Any other questions or?
I think it's something worth, you know, always exploring. And I know we were set for years in our healthcare insurance. And when we finally went out to look at other options and and get quotes, we were shocked and surprised. So I think it's something that we need to do our homework in and look at. Because at the end of the day, you know, we're responsible to take care of our employees.
No, it's been a dollar once.
Right, and then the other thing is this being steward of the constituents' dollars.
I believe that, Harden Cat, you currently carry 7 million on your liability limits. I can tell you, out of the 74 counties, there are half that, we started 2 million and no aggregates. So we've got half that are under 7 million and half that are from 7 million. We go up to 15 million. So you're kind of right in the middle now where you're at, so.
Excellent, well, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. All right, next thing I can ask for is recess or adjournment.
I'll move to recess.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. We are recessed until 11:30 AM today. Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting. And we just have one issue to come up today. And that is the discussion on the courthouse access. I don't want to say reopening because essentially we were really never closed, but for a short time and depending on services. So after talking with the elected officials and department heads, I put together a statement that I'm willing to share with the media and members of the public. And I sent that for peer review and I got some good feedback. And I didn't know if Lance, you want to say anything before I speak or Renee?
No, I looked at, I looked at yours and it looks like it covered a lot of things that I was curious about. I I know I contacted you on the governor's proclamation, but since then they've extended it. So this fits within that proclamation as well.
Right, and I think it'd be, it's fair to have that discussion. So one of the concerns resulting from the pandemic was going to Zoom meetings and allowing any boards covered by the guise of Iowa section, code section 21, allowing for electronic meetings in the form of Zoom or WebEx or Teams, whatever other platform there were. And evidently, as of late last week, that proclamation was set to expire. Being able to make those decisions covered under Iowa Code Chapter 21, no longer able to be done. Doesn't mean that we couldn't have a Zoom meeting. It just meant that the three of us would have to be in person or via phone. Other formats evidently weren't covered. But after talking to ISAC Legal Counsel yesterday, Kristy Hershberger, she explained that the proclamation was extended to June 26th. And at that time, something may change. But she was also gracious enough to say that she'd had five other county supervisors call from different parts of the state asking and inquiring about the same thing. So I'm glad that we went down that rabbit hole because I think it was important to get straight answers rather than being in violation of Iowa Code Chapter 21. She did say, after talking to me early yesterday evening, that she was going to do some research and work with the state attorney's general's office and formulate some type of opinion to get out to everybody. So we make sure that we're in compliance. And while I think, agree that it was interesting to go through the pandemic, it also enlightened some of us to the technology that can be used. So we're working maybe smarter and more fiscally smarter as well. So she's going to work and see what changes in language may be used down the line. So I think that's where that collaborative effort between the supervisors and our ISAC colleagues and the membership resources there really paid off. So I'm glad we had that conversation. You brought that to my attention, Lance. So in in the room, we have Treasurer Eichmeyer on repeaters. Did you guys want to say anything before? I think you reviewed and I made the changes that you suggested. Just the verbiage was a little different, but I think it's important that you made the comment. You know, we still kept offering customer service, client service the best we could, given the limits by the, you know, authorities above and beyond our delegated authority. Correct, Michelle?
Yeah, I just, with the reopening of our building, our building has been open to the public since June 8. We've been servicing clients even before that, when the building was actually closed to anybody coming in. We still serviced people as best we could. And I just thought, we're just going to hopefully just open the building so that people can come without an appointment to come to the building.
Right.
And enter. So in my department, we're, we want to keep driver's license by appointment only indefinitely. And then we're going to kind of do a trial on air with motor vehicle and tax. That's my opinion and that's how I would like to keep my office. And.
Okay, and I appreciate your input and involvement and engagement during this. And I read a lot of small town newspapers. I like reading those. And one that I read yesterday was from Bremer County. They made a point, they're going to stick to appointment only driver's licenses. And so.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, I think.
That are going to keep that. The state is by appointment only for driver's license as well. We've determined that it's a much better customer service offering to the public to have driver's licenses by appointments because they can schedule that. They can be in and out in 15 minutes, most generally, before we could have 10 people in the hallway. And it, somebody could sit there for an hour. I've had customers sit for over an hour before in line and and we hated that. That just, it's not good, good business. And this, through the pandemic, something great has happened. It has made us learn that appointments for driver's licenses are success, so.
I would agree with you. And I mean, during the pandemic, means of doing business have changed where it seems like the the expectation that everybody operate like a Chick-fil-A does. That seems to be that, you know, hey, we want to model your means, your process and people like a Chick-fil-A. And so I I can tell you from personal experience that it does work to make the appointments with your office.
And I know. Very helpful in the motor vehicle department. When somebody has multiple title transactions or lengthy transaction, we can. or lengthy transaction, we can, you know, get everything lined up ahead of time. And just as we've always done, we can still do everything via email, mail, Dropbox, come in, everything can be done the same. But we can do it a little bit more efficiently if people come up front and ask some questions. You know, what can we, what can we do? Do I have to come there? No, you don't have to come here, but you can if you want to, you know. But we've learned that there's lots of things that we can do and be helpful and be more efficient on getting some of those transactions done for the public.
Yeah, I think it's important because I know members of the media are joining us today as our primary attendees. But I can think of examples in almost every office where if you called the auditor's office for a passport, they can tell you what you need to bring. Instead of driving down from Alden or Ackley or Witten to do that and only get here and find out you needed something that was in your bank lockbox. Or if you're coming to the recorder's office to register an ATV, oh, you didn't know you had to bring your bill of sale and stuff. So I can think of examples in every one of our offices where making an appointment could lead to one visit rather than two, three or subsequent visits. And I know it's the mission, after talking to our elected officials and department heads, they want to offer the best service possible and, and make the best use of everyone's time. They'll respect your time if they respect yours. And sometimes that phone call is really, a thirty-second phone call will save you, you know, thirty miles driving. And so I think the involvement and the discussion and dialogue was, was good to have. Because as horrible as the pandemic was, I think we did learn how to conduct business maybe more effectively and efficiently. So anything else that I can add here?
So just as I understand this, so I'll use your office. So you're still going to be taking appointments, correct? And if somebody wanted to try to wander in, they could fill in between appointments? Or are you going to have two windows open, one for appointments, one for not appointments?
We're going to, at, at the start of this, try to, with appointments, keeping the appointments. But if somebody does come to, to the, to the office, if someone is already being serviced with an appointment, they'll take precedent over somebody that doesn't. Not that we're not going to service them, but they may have a wait in time for, you know, them to get helped. One of the things that my staff had brought up is are we going to be able to service four people at the same time in our two window slots that we have? I know that some places are still not social, this, you know, they're not social distancing. If we have to still social distance, then we'll have to only wait on two people at a time. So it's, it's going to be kind of a trial and error for us as to what's going to be best for the public and for, for us to service them.
Okay.
It's, there's, there's so many variables and we don't know what's going to play out. Are people going to keep wanting the appointments for motor vehicles? Or are we going to have just a twenty people come in, you know, without an appointment like we have in the past?
That leads to my next question as to, are we still going to try to keep the badge system going? So we have a count of how many people are in?
Yeah, and I, I, yep. And that's what security will help us with and Kerry and Quaker Security have offered to help with that and maintaining that.
And so that would keep your twenty people not from coming and sitting there. They may be outside or they may be sitting elsewhere, but.
Right, those are just all the things that we've had to think about so that we didn't just want to just say in two seconds that, yep, we're going to, you know, open the building back up. We have all these things that we have to think about, you know. Yeah.
Yeah. Renee, anything?
No, I don't have anything really.
So Matt and Elaine, I'll email you this at the close of the meeting. But after collaboration with department heads and elected officials, the courthouse will open up to the public while still guidelines. Appointments will be required, be the required method of securing a time for driver's license services. Appointments will still be taken by all officers to help guarantee customer service efficiency and to help customers prepare for the business to be conducted. While all services besides driver's licenses will not require appointments, Harton County encourages effective communications in order to best serve everyone. Security will assist in making sure social distancing can occur for our customers to the best of their abilities. And if it, if it is determined by courthouse staff or security personnel that areas are becoming overcrowded or if personal confidentiality, confidentiality in service areas can't be maintained, customers may be asked to wait in other areas, including the basement hallway. Public meetings will still be available by Zoom and archived on YouTube. Meetings may be attended by the public if a person requests to be part of the published agenda. Meeting room occupancy will be maintained so that fifteen square feet per occupant can be maintained per guidance. During the last fifteen months, we have learned to embrace technology and found that many means of practicing social distancing and safer health practices often lead to improved customer service, more effective customer encounters and improved security within Harton County facilities. Lastly, while the above mentioned guidelines are suggested, Harton County will continue to work within the health and safety guidelines and the public's scheduled and unscheduled needs to best serve them. So I would ask for a motion to approve the statement as County Attorney Meyer suggested. We acted to go into security protocol that we need to kind of back out the same way.
I will make a motion to approve the courthouse security protocol as stated.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. At this point, we had come out of recess and I can ask for adjournment.
Before we go there, so this is just for the courthouse, what did we have in the other?
The other offices, this is for our facilities. Lynn and County Attorney Meyer were going to set their own protocol for their building. And Sheriff McDaniel, I believe, will maintain whatever protocol they have.
Okay.
Okay? So that's all I have. So I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Or adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you very much.